Would you like to call this meeting to order? The meeting of the whole, and the first order of business is to approve tonight's agenda.
I'm sorry, we've finished our business, but our first order of business is to approve the meetings.
United States of America, through the Republic of Georgia states, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the Lord Jesus Christ.
And the next order of business is to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We've got a recommendation instead of all in favor.
Aye.
Both? So carried. Next order of business, recommend approval of minutes of 2019, February 19th, regular council meeting. Does everybody have a chance to read against objections?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We've got a recommendation in the second all in favor.
Aye.
Both? So carried. To review the list of claims from February 2019, does anybody have a chance to read the claims?
Yes.
Any additions, questions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We've got a recommendation in the second all in favor.
Aye.
Both? So carried. To review the account balance and financial statements for the general and mortgage super funds for February 2019.
Motion to table?
I'll second.
We have a motion to table, all in favor.
Aye.
Both? So carried. Next order of business is to approve today's statement again.
Yes, we are.
Next term.
Yes.
Looks like you grabbed a little bit of water.
Hopefully that helps light the whole stuff.
Remember, 12 weeks is a trend, so hopefully it starts trending right away.
Absolutely, yes. We did a back-to-back cribbage tournament in the month of March already because it was, the first one was so fun and a lot of people turned out. We did a second one the week after and even more people showed up. So they are catching on, they are becoming bigger, and it's really helping the Sundays still be tough.
I'd say, any other comments on this?
No.
I've just got one unit said that we're gonna meet with the other kids.
Yes.
Has that happened yet? Have you had that planned?
We did a quick meeting and then we're gonna have an actual schedule planned for April to discuss some of our events. And the first one that we did have was to do an end-of-the-winter party, which will be held on the last Friday of March this year. And we'll have a DJ and a potluck type deal.
Are we going forward with the bartenders' call-in cab rights?
Yep, they've all been informed. I did, I ended up having a meeting with all the staff. And everyone's in agreement on what to do, if somebody needs a ride home, and the scheduling we talked about. You know, if you're busy, you need to call, and what can you call on that person, and what we need to do, and not to worry about tips and all that. And they sat down, it was a great idea, wanted me to get a drink, and up here gave them specials on one item. There was a lot of good things that were said there. And then, you know, with April coming up, we're gonna do another cribbage tournament. We'll be double-staffed for Easter weekend that Friday with a DJ. I know in years past we've been close, Easter Sunday, we tried, you know, open last Sunday, or last year's for Easter, it was blocked. It's not worth it, so we are gonna be close for Easter Sunday.
Yeah, I won't be on.
Yeah, it was, you know, the patrons all said, "Oh, be open, be open," but it didn't benefit us by doing that. Otherwise, that's what we have so far for April. I am still working with Tyson Bedding on getting a plastic tip dart tournament going. We're trying to work around the dance recital and, you know, the dart vanquids and pool vanquids, but we'll eventually get that going. Unfortunately, once again, the prices of beer have gone up, but I have adjusted accordingly to that. So there is some price increases for on sale, but they've all been managed. And lastly, just the other day, I was approached by a lady from Minnesota Lottery with what I think is an amazing opportunity for the municipality. North Home and Little Fork are gonna start doing this next month. There's an idea, it's what it is, and it's a machine that will print off Power Pockets, Mega Millions, and Scratch Tickets. And it's all built in. I would be the only one that has control of the machine to replace the tickets. Basically, we make 6% off of what we sell and 1.5% off the winnings. And we could set up its own little fund to put towards the muni for upgrades. And it wouldn't come out of the muni's profits this way.
Give me 6% of the, 6% of the sales of-
Ticket sales.
Of ticket sales go to the tab or the liquor. You give 1.5% and we lose.
So if somebody wins a million dollars, we're gonna get 1.5% of that.
You'd get more than that if I won it.
But it's a great way to set up its own fund, so, you know, for any tour or, you know, any upgrades that we need to have done in that part.
With that said, also, you know, you guys mentioned that you were really happy with the new one there. How's that coming, is that?
We did get a quote from small-town tech. I think we're gonna try to get ahold of Mid-Cold and see if there's a different way to approach it. It sounds like, I'm not really good with that stuff, but it sounds like we just need to get a second router, is all we need, in order to have that up and going.
That's all you need, right?
Yes.
That's what I said at the beginning.
So is there a timetable attached to this?
He's, I have him scheduled, he came with Cheryl, I'm scheduled to come on Wednesday to set it up.
This is hard to set up.
27.
Correct.
Okay. So he'll come in and set it up, and we'll get to go?
Yep.
So we need to buy another router?
I don't know, I had nothing to do with that one.
You can get routers that-
You can just buy a router.
That's what you have.
But is ours just plug it into the one we have?
Yeah, that's a thing where you plug this above, you make the wireless on one router, and then when you take your extender, which you're buying, we're buying a wireless extender, everything will plug into the extender that has the multiple antennas on it. And then that sends a signal, it can be either 2.5 megahertz or 5 megahertz.
Should that not be like a secure password?
You put your POS system and your gambling one on the 500 megahertz, and then you put the jukebox, the dartboard, and everybody else that comes in on 2.4.
So they need to get that order, or?
Well, they should have them on hand.
Who?
You just said Minar, Minar does.
Maybe, but we don't have a kit.
Yeah, well, you'll need a Wi-Fi extender to get this going.
I mean, that's the whole issue, we've been talking about this for a month, and we don't know what we're supposed to get.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not an expert in that area.
Excuse me, we haven't had the audience.
Yeah, I just said, I was in the bar with Tyson, that's the guy that runs the dart machines. Who runs the dart machines?
Tyson.
Tyson?
Yeah.
Tyson.
They don't give you one.
They wanna hook up those dart machines to the internet.
Yeah.
And to do that, they also need a secure connection, or a secure connection.
Right.
So it would be, I think a good recommendation would be to have Tyson, whoever has the router that's gonna be used for the gambling thing, to sit down with Mid-Continent and really find out what they need.
Some router?
There's a router over there already.
Yeah, well, the one that they have there right now was one that Craig bought at Kmart for $40. But it just does not have the security built into it as you would if you went and bought a router extension.
Can I make a suggestion here? It seems like, Jen, you're not really comfortable with this, and what we need, what we don't need. Do we have somebody, you know, or something like that, that understands what we need, or can find what we need, and get it ordered? Or why, I mean, when it comes to like, I need myself all of that to kind of introduce it, I don't do that either, so.
Okay, can I read this? I don't think we need a router. I got this from Henry at Rainier Games today, I sent it to Cheryl. "We do not use a site's wireless network. Ideally, when we do the install, there's a data cable that goes from a central location in the bar. It needs to be near power, not close to any other router or neon sign, to the bar's router, and access to the internet." "We do not, we then, when we do the install, we plug our router into that cable and into the power, and we are good to go." "It does not use much bandwidth," and he's asking Pilot, the company, the distributor, exactly.
Well, let him do this, this is that he come in and plug it in.
Okay.
Because he's probably in the main line before the router, then he's gonna put a splitter on it.
Correct.
And he's gonna take his speed guarantee off that data cable and put it on their router for their game, and then what the other splitter will run into our router, and it'll run everything else.
And let's not do any hood advertising on Facebook or our rec club page, any of that, until we test it for a day and make sure it doesn't bomb out.
Because that's where we started this conversation, was it's gonna-
Well, when the PSS, yes.
And it gets locked down right now anyway.
Because right now, when we're busy in the bar and people are trying to play new stuff with jukeboxes, it does, it slows down.
If they start doing that, he said, if you give people on those iPads and they get kicked out, they'll not come back to play again. So we'll do like a trial run before we do any-
And you'll find out whether that's a dual-band router, what you mean is a dual-band router. That has two different bandwidths for every one. If you're trying to run everything on that router on a single band, 2.4, that's where you get it dropped off, because you've got so many, so much data trying to go through that cable, going and coming back to everything that's hooked up to it. If you've got two, you log in your POS system and everything on one with your special password, and then everybody else uses the other one.
Well, if it isn't too much to ask, I think you can see if you can receive this project, of course. Obviously, you understand that, and to get it online, I appreciate that, and whatever you cost to do, if you have to hire someone to help you, or if I were to remove it, I'd see if we could get this out of the running. And then test it for a day, like we said, and-
Getting back to this bird, this is kind of a theory.
I have a quick, I just, yeah, I think it's a great idea, anything to get people in there, obviously, that's why we're doing the e-tabs. I would personally like somebody to go ask the other bars in town that have it to see if it's affected their pool tab sales. Because if they did, I would definitely say the rec club would not want that to happen.
And that's what I was gonna suggest, that, I mean, how is that typically, the pool tab that we have right now, with the situation we have right now? And is there any other setup either, anything with this?
Just that hundred dollars to start up, and then it's just $20 a year, that's it.
Yeah, it sounds like a great deal, I just, I almost have them, I've seen them.
Yeah, and they're the one bar that's the nearest one that has both, the pool tabs.
I'll be doing the selling pool tabs, correct?
No, it's not.
I mean, modern tickets.
And scratch.
The only-
It doesn't affect pool tabs.
I know that Red Wing, the app lodge in Red Wing have pool tabs and these, and the third ones. That's kind of, it's just a matter of finding out from other bars, like you suggested. We don't wanna take it away from the rec club.
No, we don't, but this would also generate a lot of money too, for the muni. This is a great way to make money too, without affecting the rec club, because people are gonna play their pool tabs still, there's no doubt about it. We don't know that till we go ask the other bars if it's affected their pool tabs.
That's what I'd say, because it hasn't been more beneficial.
That's a great idea.
And we're back in the pool tabs, of course, so I think just with a few, oh, see, the pool tab sales have been affected by this. Has this been installed, where has this been installed?
Is that my call step, Jen?
No, he retired.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, he works at the radio station though.
Where is this currently being used at or being installed?
The closest one to us is in Falls, at Hanson's outpost. And then Little Fork and North Home Muni are both starting this up, come April.
Okay, is Hanson, did you say Hanson, that they sell pool tabs there?
They do.
Can you, you know, that's only one check, Hanson, that check is several places, but if you can see if some way of monitoring that, if they can save pool tab sales, is it, who gets revenue from Hanson's pool tab operation, is that?
I think it's-
I mean, that's-
It's not with the club, I can call by route.
Well, yeah, I mean, just to see how that's affected, because obviously, you know, it says that we get 1.5% of the winnings or 6% of the sales. Rainier Rec has been, I don't know what's it, you know.
We get 10%.
Beer, everything else from Rainier-
We get 10%.
Been, we've been doing more than 6% from Rainier Rec, I know that, so. Again, it sounds great, because it's a good idea, but we don't wanna jeopardize that either. So I think just a little proven investigation into Hanson's, and then, or if you can find some other place that some pool tabs have, just see what the effect has been. Bring it back to us, maybe you can have it by the next council meeting, a week from now, and we can make a decision after this.
Okay.
I'm sure there's more than one place that does it.
Oh, yeah, she gave me a list, but that was the closest one.
And I don't care if you're in a different city or anything, I'm just seeing the effect.
Okay.
All right? All right. Any other questions on?
Motion to help close me, you know, Jen?
I think they said since the time they had it in, that outpost paid like $24,000 off for this issue. And that was their own money to use how they saw fit.
I mean, it's upgrade, I just wanna make sure that, you know, it won't kill it, won't lose, so to speak here, so. Any other questions for Jen? We have, what do we have in next month, you say another cribbage tournament, and a few things like that, or?
Yeah, we'll do, at the end of this month, we're gonna have an end-of-winter party, and then we're gonna have another cribbage tournament in April, and then we're gonna do an Easter weekend deal with a DJ and-
I'd say most of that boysy shut down in the state.
That's gonna be in-
That's the end of April, I believe.
It's, yeah, this year, it's the end of April, because then it's 2020, they rotate now between spring and fall. So it's gonna be, no, it won't be till the fall of 2020, they only go every 18 months now.
I know, you know, they had the Corseill Tigers hockey tournament this week in town, and traditionally, there's a team that visits Rainier Muni.
They did not play in the city.
They couldn't find rooms.
Oh, is that a problem?
That's what this has got, so obviously, I think that was a big contributor, but I'm sure you've seen some revenue from that, I don't know if it's as much as-
No, we did, we did well, we did.
I know that's about to move next, right in Rainier. That's about to move next year, right in Rainier.
Well, that's, that's all. Okay, well, any other questions for Jen? Need a recommendation on the digger store statement?
Recommend approval.
I'll second.
We've got a recommendation in the second all in favor.
Aye.
Both? Next order of business is to approve tonight's agenda. I think it gets tied here, we started getting water breaks, flooding, our coves, everything else. You know, I mentioned to Bobby and Cheryl here, that cove between Rasmussen's and Eric Ramsay's. Maybe you could talk to the county or the state super rap to make sure that that cove is, you know, it's solid.
We can, I actually, it is allowed. Come jet it tomorrow to make sure.
If it's open, that's fine, and then that little bit of catch base is so close, that catch base has holes out. Because I know that Everts could have a lot of water, and it'd have on that side of the street, so.
Yeah, we took some off of there, but there's still gonna be so much.
Well, you just have to make sure that that's open, you know, you go to one end or the other, find that one end, and make sure it's open, because once it starts thawing. And then, that road will dry up real quick, and you can get that snow off the top and the ice, and I think you've done quite a bit of that already, so I haven't inspected since I went home, but-
You've been working on it, yeah, in the mornings, when it's the first of the year, so you're gonna take it as much of it.
Another thing too, I mentioned, we pretty much got all the trees and everything removed from that village property, just to the east of the river, just between the Paul Vex property and Harrison's.
There's quite a bit more in there, but I just noticed that a lot of the snowmelt have got so deep to get back on the snowmelt.
There'll be, probably, you'll probably have a couple of weeks' time here, when the snow melts and it still stays frosty, you get the trees out of there now, and then if we get some fill this year, because we've had that wetland inspection and everything, so we'll be able to get that piece of the sod filled.
Yep.
Without any big issue, but it's easy to remove trees down there. Yes, Bobby?
I want, they have a man named Sears put in your cove, because there's nothing running through that cove. And I brought it up here last fall, but it was kind of late. So all the water that runs from down, maybe all over by Sandy's place, there's nothing running towards the park that way. It's all coming out of my way, so it needs a new cove.
And who was this?
Manny Sears.
Are you familiar with that area? Okay, is her cove, is that the problem?
No, it's crushed on a few ends, I'd have to look at it again. Last year, the water flowed through the spring, we skated it, froze, but last year, all the coves froze. This year, we haven't skated anything, yeah, they all went out.
I think it's because we have a whole-
We need our runoff for, before I can tell what anything needs over there.
I took a hose over there last fall, and it would not run through there.
Is there a-
It's fallen somewhere.
Well, it was jetted open in the spring, Bob, then it flowed through there. This is under a person's private driveway, Bob, how do you wanna handle that?
Well, she should pay for it. I pay for mine.
Yeah, if she needs to go cove, do you approach coves, or are they responsible to the property owner?
I'm aware of that, but how do we go tell people, just because one person says they need it, to make them buy it?
Well, we have to make sure, is it plugging ditch drainage?
Don't know yet.
Well, that's what I'm saying, when it is, that when-
You're not allowed to do that.
Well, that's what we'll have to do, if it plugs the ditch drainage, and it's, you know, protocol, it belongs to her or Bob or me.
Yeah, when it gets warmer, things start to run.
It'll have to be removed, and they'll have to pay for it. If they don't, we'll have to just do it and then charge against their tax rules. But if it is plugging the drainage, that's, we'll just have to get it done.
And to get it, they had to charge it against their tax.
Yeah, I mean, just tell them, it's their obligation to pay for it, but if they don't do it, I mean, there's only a limited amount of time, and give us a period. And so, you know, monitor that, and then, Bobby.
Oh, yeah, that means Saturday is gonna start telling us.
Do you have a sewer, just a sewer tape?
Yep.
You know, actually, that's, them steel sewer tapes, you can run them through them coves and see if they're, like you say, plugged, or not plugged. It don't take much, if you can get one of those sort of things through, because there's just ice in it, that'll get thawed out real quick.
Yeah.
I think we did have, we didn't have our annual February thaw up, or we normally get, like, for January, January, February, and that runoff usually freezes up all the coves. So this year, we never had one, and I don't see coves plugged anywhere, so I think we may lock out here, because we started getting one down in some real cold weather, we may, we'll be-
We've got all sorts of strong grades in Colorado, 20, none of them have been frozen.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, that January, January, February thaw caused a lot of issues. You don't recognize it till March, but that's when it happens. Was there, any other things that you guys had?
I just have one more thing, these ratings over here, is to see that they're resting, is there, is there a plan to?
Every year, we paint them. Every, since they've been installed, we've got a standard, we've scripted, okay?
There's no warranty on that?
No. Plus, it's, clean them up, paint them.
And the doors though?
Yeah, people are gonna need space, I mean, they'll pay them up and clean them.
And there's no, can't put metal down instead, so we don't have this issue?
Yeah, we probably could look at that, yeah.
I mean, that would maybe, at least last couple of years versus every year, that would too.
If it was painted properly, but you gotta remember the foot traffic and salt and all that.
That's what I'm saying, maybe metal plating down.
Yeah, probably.
Help maybe alleviate part of that problem.
Something to, I don't know, maybe, no, look at that, look at that, yeah.
Other than that, don't have any?
Anybody else got any other, if Bobby does? Okay, can we give a thanks, Nick? Appreciate it, keep the post, if there's anything else, so. The next to the resolution 2019, we're creating a proof of contract with Kelly Myers for building inspection, and that's probably concerning to the distillery, that it has to be inspected by a certified building inspector.
Yeah, I can explain to everybody.
I think go ahead.
Yeah, we, since we don't have a ordinance that, that everybody's fault to say, "Really, no, we've got a building that has to be inspected for certain certification, a certain certificate of occupancy and accessibility, so we are responsible for making sure that it's done. So we have to hire someone to make sure that it's inspected. Kelly Myers, who works for International Falls, is willing to do it as an independent contractor. I sent his contract off to Cleveland Southern Cities for his management, and it suggests a little bit more language, but came back and said that we would, we, our insurance would cover whatever he's doing, because it's a sort of the technical thing with building inspection. So we're all, so. I spoke with a developer today, and there's gonna be several more inspections, obviously, that they have to go through.
Plumbing, electrical.
Plumbing, electrical, and elevator, and a lot of it will have to come through a certified building inspector. And if it wasn't somebody local, you know, it would have to be somebody from way up the town who knows where we get it, and so we're lucky that Kelly's able to do it.
Okay, the fees for that, is that something the city picks up, or that builder picks up?
Well, we don't have an ordinance in place, and it's gonna be able to move the S.A., so I mean, it's-
Has that been discussed with the-
It hasn't, I brought it up with the developer today, it's gonna be $65 an hour. I'm gonna think it's gonna be many, many hours, go through your plans, and go through a lot of stuff, so, you know, obviously, that's not my call to make, but-
So who's gonna pay the $65?
That's the question.
I just, yeah, because obviously, we've been pretty lenient, we've always covered our expenses, we're supposed to, so this is, I don't know if it's been a really big change.
Not just that, they got a tax break.
So we don't have, it actually covers-
But they got a tax break from us, so I don't think we should have to eat the $65.
No, I don't think we shouldn't pay for it, but I would never, we counted it before.
And then moving forward, is this something that we should have him on retainer for other things that might happen? Because I read this, and it says it's gonna be on a need-to-need basis.
Correct.
On what?
On a need basis.
On a need basis, let's say we needed it somewhere else, we can always, this contractor cover that.
Well, that's, and that's fine, and I think that we have to just be aware that when we start actually building permits, and license of occupation and stuff are necessary, and we have to pass those defenses on to the developers, so that they pay them.
So he's the only one that we can use in town?
I think you can use any-
They're very well covered.
The whole problem would be if we got somebody from out of town, you're gonna pay them each a dime.
And it's not gonna be at the time that they, they want this, April, whatever, and, you know, sure, you probably go to Virginia or Virginia or wherever, try to find somebody, and self-make that, I can do that.
So is he gonna be at our beck and call? I mean, I know this guy is busier than the one with the guy at a kid in contest.
He's been talking to the developers, and he's what I'm doing.
They'll want us to be on the developer, because they're anxious to get these inspections, so they can carry out more kinds of shit, they have to inspect something for this.
That was my only concern, that was his time.
So they will be the one, how are we?
Yeah, because I know he's busy.
It should be every phase inspected, like, do the cement work?
Um, not necessarily, that's not necessarily the way the building inspection code works here, so. They have gone through, you know, certainly certified plumbers and certified engineering and- They have gone through, you know, certain certified plumbers and certified engineering and all that, so. They're, they're on top of what the thing is.
I can tell you, there's, you know, the state funding inspector, electable inspector, all these different inspectors that are doing inspectors, so I just say, let's let them handle it. They, they...
I really don't have a problem with that, if it works out that way, because I know if we went from out of town, it would just be that much more, it might be six months. I'll second the motion to move forward with the resolution.
We have a resolution and a recommendation, and a second all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Both? Still curious. I think you, I think you could, notify Kelly, didn't have, all of you would have.
I know it's on, but she's just...
Or whatever, she'll call. Rainier, how's the study, where do we go from here? I guess you guys attended that meeting, where they just basically explained that housing shortage, not just city budget, coming why you're doing that, so.
They produced a study with several findings and recommendations, said to promote development, promoting programs, and assess the homeownership, considering development, purchase, repurchase programs, law available only. It's just, so where, where do we go now? I mean...
You know, traditionally, this is something that now we have this report, it would probably at least be sitting on your desk or in the office here, so that when an interested developer comes by, he can look at that, review it, see where the needs are, then start applying to the different agencies or whatever funding that's available. Because I do believe there's something going on right now with the Baptist group in there, and they're trying to get some...
Right.
Some, what do you call it, some type of housing in there, and they're working through this program. And so these developers, you know, that was the idea of this, I think, why to get this, to actually document the needs, and with this documentation, they can easily approach some kind of city, state, federal type of funding and look for assistance and, and some relief to help, help these projects, so. Basically, once we go, try to solicit somebody to come and look, you know, this city over here, we have to present them with this, this study, and then take it from there. If they're interested, they'll...
Is this housing for the elderly or...
All kinds. It identified, it identified what type of housing was missing here, rentals, you know, one, you know, rentals to, you know, single home, ten, housing. It identified the whole housing spectrum, so. Starts with how many would be recommended and needed. I think, I think Rainier showed it to us, possibly in the next two years, where like 10 houses short, or eight, ten, and things like that, so they'll analyze this, and then any type of person that's looking for some, you know, thinking of building something, it's a, it's a good tool for them.
So I think last year, there was only one new home built in International Falls.
Well, I think again, that's, that's the reason for the study, we're different than that, well, many different levels of housing, and the study proved that, so now, maybe it's this for ammunition to help secure some type of funding and assistance. And so with that, I think we just leave it on that, and, I mean, right now, I know I've talked to some local people, some land in the area that they'd be interested in, and maybe selling some of their properties, or developers showed up, because I know we, from time to time, get required to come into the city office, asking, you know, what's available, or what's, what's that, so that might be one thing that you might want to start doing, Cheryl, is just, maybe just making a little, give a little book of potential property that may be of interest to people, but usually, they'll do their own diligence on that. That's all we can do as far as that goes, unless we want to publicly seek something for that right now. Let's really love to do that, so, make that available to wear locks and the door. Okay, so, the next item is the resolution 2019-01 in the North Coochie area, and I carry this to the MPCA Schedule for Compliance to the Infiltration Investigation and Elimination Agreement.
So this is, this is our first step, we don't have us, so, and these are gonna have to sign this elimination agreement, just off all the things that you have to comply with, so.
Did you, you know, when we sat down with our consulting engineer, and we sent him back with what the recommendations to the MPCA, or what we did, all the compliance we did, and everything else, and what he seemed, did we hear back from him, and how did the meeting go with him and the MPCA, because he thought they maybe questioned a few other things?
Um, he sent, but he sent the report back, which I just suggested, and it's, it's in a final form right now. So we're, we're by our hand again.
For the audience's information, we proceeded with our, you know, issues of infiltration and on this issue, and did all the due diligence that we posted, and heard a consulting firm, and then followed through with all the recommendations that he come up with as far as leaky manholes, things like that, and then completed them, and hired a contractor to do them, and we, quite honestly, we had very little, for, besides the issue, we had, we had very little issues, but we corrected the few things that he did find immediately, filled out, we had him fill out the report, had it all signed, videoed, you know, followed up with all the documentation, so as far as we're concerned, Rainier is 100% compliance with that. We sit, you know, we, obviously, he went down with the MPCAs, so we'll see if we agree with that.
I don't think he went...
You just said the report.
Well, no, he didn't do the report, he just sent it to us, and then we were gonna send it to Cindy, and Cindy's gonna send it. And it's not even due for another 120 days, so.
Well, anyway, we're, we're here again, and we've done our stuff that we feel are necessary to comply, and so. Just give me that false.
Sounds like it, I read through it a couple of times, but it sounds like the point is when we have more wastewater going through the system than what we should.
More clear water.
Clear water, infiltration, you know, like when on a rainy day, we have manhole holes in it, or it is in the bottom of the ditch where water can get into it.
That's the wastewater here.
But they're referring to, not, they're referring to water that comes in through manholes or...
Yeah, it's infiltration that there is.
Some pumps.
Any, any.
People have their some pumps running into the...
That's some pumps, or manhole, see, that was in the...
That's going down the sewer.
Ditch, ditch, there's water, and water goes in the top of the cove, and that, but all our manholes were checked.
There weren't complaints.
And we had, and we fixed them, sealed them, and, you know, and then we monitored the heavy rain flows to see if there was an increase, and there's an acceptable level, and we will hold that, and we'll hold it, so. It's our, our system experience.
So first time this is a milestone, we're all coming to the meeting and say, we, this week, we, it was within 50 days, we had to issue this report, so we're gonna have to just keep on the schedule, and we'll just repeat when that time happens, so we'll keep on it, and that's it.
Okay, well, moving on from that, I think we need a resolution for that. Can I get a recommendation on the Schedule of Compliance? Like a recommendation of approval?
A second.
Not a recommendation, a second all in.
Aye.
Both? Still curious. Another important thing coming up, we have a congressman, Congressman Pete Osterstoffer. He, his outreach lays on Spencer Ego, is that it?
Right.
Ego?
Yeah.
Ego, it's gonna be here on March 23 at 10:00 a.m., so I think that's, can think of any issues that he wants to address. Obviously, he, you know, he took, ripped home spot, and the whole definition rip was to us, helping us with some type of, in particular, the railroad, and some other things, but, so he's actually our voice in Congress, so if you have any issues that he may help address, I'm sure they want to hear them, so they bring them back. If they don't hear our problems, then he really can't help you.
That gonna be here?
At 10 o'clock on Thursday.
10 o'clock on Thursday, so if you can't make it, want something, some questions asked about, I'm sure we'll take notes and bring them back. And I think what I suggested, you know, we have been contacting local letter to the George Charles Senator, and addressing some concerns with the railroad, and some issues that we have there, and I think we would have just, you could basically present him with the same letter, and see what he can do to help us with some of the same situations or parts of them that he can work together with, but basically, that's all we ended up getting to, so it wasn't just one senator or one congressman, there was a, there was a joint effort between quite a few different states, county, or senator.
Who was the one that took over for Frank? Pardon me. Who took over for Frank?
Tina Smith.
Tina Smith.
Because we had him here for 10 on the railroad issue.
Well, he did great.
That Pete, that's real, been around there with, who started that? You refer, I believe, Tina Smith. And...
McCoskey.
McCoskey. Actually, I had a lunch with him a couple of weeks ago, discussed some issues. I used to talk to the county about, actually, about the, you know, the man manual issue, and some other issues, and, so, he reaches out to, he, you know, we're pretty tight, so he keeps in contact with the county, and usually, that's, so whenever he's wrong, I try to at least get his ear for a few minutes. He's pretty receptive. At least he, at least he know about our problems. So anything, so with that said, if you guys got anything, or can attend that?
How much money for the dollar?
That, as soon as possible.
Yes, he can.
That's something that, that's a good point about, but that's, that's the saying, we're moving on some of that stuff, so those are the things that you gotta let him know what we got going on, and maybe we'll find a spot where he can help you with some assistance. Okay, moving on to that, again, that's 10 o'clock on Thursday, the MRWA training session, Rainier Community Hall.
The Minnesota Rural Water Association reached out to us on a light reception fee at, you know, Cooch, and asked if we could go to the training session for this region, which is nice, because Nick can go to the training in town, and obviously, better too, and it's gonna be April 10 here, it starts at 8. If anybody would like to come in at the beginning, or lunch, just say welcome to Rainier, that would be very nice.
They have a lunch here?
Yeah, yeah, they'll be from 8 to 3 or 4, and it's all day, and it mostly is on suicide.
Does he have a brochure tonight, Sarah?
Yeah, it's Minnesota Rural Water Association.
Actually, they're on there.
Right, but they do have a training, but it's, no, I think it doesn't have to travel anywhere, so.
Okay, with that said, moving on, number just to the open forum, I'll look up the audience, anything in the audience?
The Red Club scheduled their Easter party for April 14, 1 o'clock. The Easter party will be here about 1:15. Saturday at 1:00 o'clock, yeah, we're doing control, so anybody who'd like to grab a shovel and help us, we'd appreciate that. We clean up at the park and here, because we do the little kids around here, and the older kids are over at the park, so the Saturday before we go, we clean up.
Hold the snow, we go.
Yeah, yeah, and if not, sometimes it's good that it's here, because we got... April 14th, the Sunday before Christmas, or before Easter. It's the sun worshiping it. And we had a great turnout for the skating party, skating slash sledding party, got a warm day, so the kids had a lot of fun. There's a great article in the newspaper, lots of pictures, for those of you that didn't see it.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that, when we had, Nick was up there, we...
Yes, and Nick did.
I think that was a, I got there a little late, but I...
Yeah, excited you're coming in.
I think we made that pretty successful, too. There's several of the local youth hockey teams also that had their...
They were coming, right?
Many, many.
They had a lot of, some played up there.
Who actually knew what the rank was.
Yeah.
They started at 3 o'clock, yeah.
They have it there, so I think you might see a little more of that, they'll coordinate that with that, so I do think the weather was great. It's always hard to predict the weather in March.
Well, and Bobby and Bill and Nick.
Early March like that, if we can get a, get a day like that.
We need to get to the boards, so.
I think the boards, we have that.
We worked here, but next week, we kind of lined up the timeline to get the boards going, so.
Yeah, I guess we should.
His tour needs, I don't know, like, a little pause, because they got that big snowfall in the before, right?
Yeah.
That morning? Bill was there at 8 o'clock in the morning, shoveling the snowballing, going, great swing.
That's why I was a little bit too stoned.
Yeah, it was gone.
Yeah, Nick, sorry, when you were up in your meeting, I think we probably should discuss that, but at the next come, next meeting, we definitely want to have a schedule of approaching boards.
Yeah, so Todd and Wilbur and I are writing the grant. KDA is out of money, they're out of money in March, so they'll have more money available in July, so we want to have the grant done before June 1st, so they can get it in there before.
That's very important, and, you know, I tabled, there is about $5,000 left to deb pound, or rather than give that away, we tabled that, so we'll actually have about $30,000 in July to start dispersing.
Yeah, Nick and I were just talking about this, we want to have it.
Whatever requests we can get, but there are, there are going to be quite a few requests up there, and...
We're good.
We do talk about some of the guidelines to, you know, as Eric gets something to request on that, so make sure we have that in, and we'll see that it gets looked at far. Anything in the audience, decide further? Nobody else?
Motion, Jim?
Aye, second.
You got a recommendation, you said to do a journal, all in favor?
Aye, aye.